This meeting is being held in accordance with the Public Meetings Act, also on this Sunday July J S A and following four deaths since. Notice that meeting was sent to the Daily Record and Citizen Thursday, January second, two thousand twenty five, and published from the Daily Record on Tuesday, January seventh, in Citizen on Wednesday, January. These notices were sent to forty eight hours prior to this meeting, which sent sufficient time for the publications published. Additionally, this meeting is being re- was readvertised for. Notice that meeting was sent to the Daily Record and Citizen on Thursday, September twenty fifth, and published both papers on Wednesday. All notices were posted on the bulk and board of municipal buildings, as well as posted on the town's website. These notices were sent to forty eight hours prior to this meeting and were sent sufficient time for the publications published. Copy of said notices on file, the municipal clerk. I just want to go on record and state that we do have an interpreting here tonight if anyone should be. At this hour, please ask everyone to rise for my question. At the United States of America, into the Republic, the citizens, the nations, under God, individual with liberty, injustice, or standing for location, Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our community, fairness, wisdom, patience, community, to make decisions that have been of all. Their actions reflect integrity, justice. You want to vote this?
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
There's him.
Here.
Councilmember Corrigan?
Here.
Councilmember Sapias?
There it is.
Councilmember Torre? Councilmember Vales?
Here.
Councilmember Whitner?
Here.
Mayor Todd?
Here. Mayor, any, any reports? At the D P W.
Could you just hold the mic?
Uh, D P W, um, report. The D P W, uh, had been working hard on completing essential, essential start. Essential repairs, maintenance, and facility upgrades. As we prepare for our annual Christmas parade and tree lighting on December first, downtown J K Park Holiday decorations are already installed and ready for the season. D P W remains committed to providing efficient, credible, and community-focused services for all residents, for main- maintenance and operations. Uh, road and street repairs are ongoing, curbside leaf collection runs from October fourteenth to December twelfth. Downtown street sweeping continues six days a week, weekly signage repairs and installations of approved handicap signs. For sewer and park, routine sewer inspections, repairs, and responses to blockage points, weekly park maintenance, tree trimming, and build upkeep. For feet and equipment, it's weekly vehicle maintenance, and winter equipment is fully prepared and ready though. And, uh, the D P W looks forward to supporting the Christmas parade and the tree lighting on December first. That's all I got. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, tonight, before we go into our public comment, uh, I just want to speak about ordinance forty eight that's on the agenda tonight. Ordinance forty eight, uh, two thousand twenty five, an ordinance of many towns, which is seven of the code town of Dover, to eliminate the position of Chief of Police and Deputy Chief of Police. This ordinance was to coincide with the Public Safety Director ordinance, which, you know, judgment which decided that judicial law would take precedence over a decided law, which I don't agree with. And I don't think any, uh, Supreme Court would agree with you. But, um, being that, being what it, what it is, the judge ruled that Dover will not have a Public Safety Director, so the ordinance forty eight, two thousand twenty five, uh, will be removed from the agenda tonight. That ordinance was put on the agenda without my approval, um, and unfortunately, it's on for tonight, but I'm going to remove it. We're not even going to, actually can. That was to go coincide with the P S C ordinance. To remove all on that subject, do you want to just, um, update this board and update the public, um, on the case of check, unfortunately?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So good evening, every, um. Last week, uh, on, uh, Friday, I believe, twenty first, received the decision from, uh, Judge McQuist with respect to ordinances, uh, thirty, two thousand twenty five, and forty two thousand twenty five, which are two ordinances which were passed by this council to, um, install a Public Safety Director into the vice chief's position. The judge, um, voided both of those ordinances, so there's no action that needs to be taken, uh, denied, though, the request for attorney's change, and denied the optation finding. It sounded over contemporary to me, avoiding on the ordinances. Um, I respectfully disagree with Judge's, uh, conclusion and interpretation. I wholeheartedly believe that he is wrong on the law in his, um, opinion with respect to the interpretation of North Brunswick, case that we relied upon in crafting the ordinance, um, which was approved by the Department of Defense in nineteen ninety nine. Um, and, 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 and quite frankly, reading his decision, it doesn't follow, um, the law, it reads more of a decision based upon just what he wanted to see as an outcome, trying to find, uh, a decision to justify it based upon arguments that were made under plan. So, um, I understand what you're doing, but I just wanted to let everyone know that I do disagree with the ruling, and, uh, we're still reviewing, you know, outcomes and what we may recommend to that going forward. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mo. Okay, so ordinance forty will be removed from the agenda. Okay, at this time, all but as pushing the made, the public in my republic wishes to be heard on any agenda item only, is raised your hand in line to the meeting.
No hands, Mayor.
No hands.
Oh, okay. Edward Grimes?
Edward Grimes. Good evening. Uh, from what I understand, I didn't look at the agenda, but is there an ordinance or a resolution to give, um, Sergio another thirty-five thousand dollars of taxpayer money for his legal defense? Is that what I'm hearing? Um, if that's true, there's a lot more things that Dover needs, uh, than to spend money on that. Um, so far, it's the running total is about seventy thousand at that point. You could put a new handicap elevator in the, the, the building for that ma- money. You can, uh, you can do a lot of things. You can fix some sidewalks in Dover. So I hope that's not the case. Uh, I just heard that may happen tonight. I didn't look at the agenda, but, um, it seems like that, uh, may be happening, and, uh, I think more people should be outraged if that's the, that's the case. Thank you, sir.
Ordinance.
Maria Chacon?
Maria Chacon.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello, hi. Um, all right, I just heard, uh, Mr. Grimes bringing up, um, which I can't believe that's correct, the, uh, giving more money to Sergio Rodriguez. Sergio is leaving in December. Um, we shouldn't have given him money in the first place, and I spoke to a constituent who said that they needed their roads paved. So I would imagine that, you know, the claim that we never have money and that we're gonna give money as a Christmas or going away present to Sergio to help him with his problems that he created himself would be a selfish, irresponsible action from the council people. I hope that's not true. And I also wanted to, uh, touch base on the other ordinances, which is about, uh, a whole bunch of developments that are happening i- in Dover. I imagine this is gonna equate to the one thousand apartments coming up. Um, one of the things that I always ask is, are these pilots gonna be at least fifteen-year pilots? Not thirty years, because we'll all be dead by the time we get to enjoy the fruit of this big gigantic pilot break that we give to these wealthy, um, investors. Are we gonna get anything back? Are they gonna invest in our community? Are they gonna invest in giving back to our schools? Are they gonna help us build a new school? Are they gonna help us with a new senior center that they're gonna pay for? What are we gonna get out of it besides us giving them land to make money of our town? Thank you.
Ordinance.
Carol Ruiz?
Carol Ruiz.
Intérprete, por favor?
Hello? Adelante, señor. Sorry.
Ya está listo?
Carol Ruiz, adelante.
Ya está listo el tiempo y el intérprete o?
Is it time for the interpreter ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Si. El cuánto tiempo va a ser porque creo que la última vez no, no sé si son diez minutos o seis minutos.
How much time do I have? Because, seis minutos. Six minutes in the Dover, how many years, when you have my feelings, my wish you've vanished, it's three minutes. Do I say, minuto, esta parte de la tracción?
Veo la hora de seis veintinueve, entonces voy a empezar ahora.
I'll start now, now six thirty-nine.
Intérprete, puedes esperar que yo pare para hablar, por favor?
Muy bien, igualmente.
Con las seis y veintinueve voy a empezar de nuevo. Hay ordenanza en la agenda sobre una aplicación llamada piloto.
I want to talk about something on the agenda named, uh, pilot.
Hay varias ordenanzas día tras día sobre estas aplicaciones piloto, que creo que muchos en nuestra comunidad no entendemos muy bien.
There are many ordinances regarding these pilots, which the community doesn't understand very well.
Por supuesto, como todo en la vida, en moderación, un piloto puede ser un beneficio para una comunidad.
As commonly known, these pilots could be a benefit for the community.
Como todo, en moderación.
In moderation.
Nosotros en Dover ya tenemos como ocho, siete, seis pilotos en este momento, no sé si cualquiera ya ha cumplido a esta hora.
I think that here in Dover, we already have about eighty ten, uh, ordinances, or, I'm sorry, pilots, I don't know many.
Y no hacemos sino proponer más y más y más.
And all we do is propose more and more.
Nuestro pueblito es pequeño.
We have a small town.
Tenemos parques, sí, pero no tenemos donde estacionar.
We have parks, yes, but nowhere to park.
No tenemos piscina comunitaria, ni parque para perros comunitario.
We don't have a community, nor a park for dogs.
Ni siquiera tenemos un centro comunitario.
We don't even have a community center.
Dos de los barrios tienen que compartir una, un, un sitio para votar.
Two, uh, boroughs need to share one voting place.
Entonces es más que obvio que no tenemos donde desarrollar.
So it is very, uh, logic that we don't have a place to develop.
También nos hace falta vivienda asequible, pero no podemos dejar que nos manipulen con esa necesidad por vivienda asequible.
And we do need, uh, affordable homes, but we don't need this in order to get the affordable homes.
No necesitamos manipulación de la información.
We don't have the information, we don't need the information to be manipulated.
Podemos obtener viviendas asequibles sin pilotos para apartamentos lujosos de treinta años.
We should get these affordable homes without the need of these pilots or luxury homes.
Podemos atraer inversionistas como lo ha hecho Loco Paco, como lo ha hecho muchos municipios cercanos y lejos aquí en Nueva Jersey.
We could attract investors or luxury homes, uh, as many other towns nearby have done.
Incluyendo el lago opaco.
I'm sorry, pardon?
Incluyendo el lago opaco.
Oh, Lago, oh, in, including Lago Paco.
Esa comunidad, um, empezó y sigue siendo una comunidad de personas de la clase de trabajadores.
That is a community of working, uh, people.
Y ahora también tienen muchos sitios lujosos.
They have a lot of luxury places.
Ya traen, uh, visitantes, uh, para su com- comercio, para sus negocios.
And they do bring investors for their, uh, business.
Dover puede hacer lo mismo.
Dover can do the same.
Y le, tenemos la responsabilidad de hacer lo mismo.
And we have the responsibility to do the same.
Sin estas mentiras.
Without lies.
Que nadie viene a Dover, que Dover es peligroso, que es sucio, que es feo.
Lies like nobody comes to Dover and Dover is ugly or dangerous.
Nuestro departamento de policía.
Our police department.
Nuestro departamento de trabajos públicos.
And our public works department.
Nuestro departamento de bomberos.
And our fire, uh, fire department.
Nuestros residentes, nuestros comerciantes, nuestras escuelas.
Our residents, our business people, and schools.
Todos aportan para asegurar que Dover sea una comunidad bonita, limpia y a-
Robert Branigan?
Bob Branigan?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
It's so weird.
Okay, I'm hearing a lot of objections about this thirty-five thousand dollars being paid to Sergio for his legal fees, even though that's a decision that I did not support, being that he was being represented by council previously to that and paying for his own legal fees. I do wonder why people are not complaining about the taxpayers having to pay seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Captain Newton, because he was bypassed for the chief's position when former Mayor Blackman appointed Delaney over him, even o- even over the fact that, uh, Newton had seniority over Delaney. And, uh, but I don't hear anybody complaining about that, and, you know, when I worked in the post office, when a job became available, it was this person who had, uh, was the senior bidder that got that position, but apparently, uh, former Mayor Blackman, uh, didn't see fit to, uh, to go that route, so I was just, uh, wondering why, uh, as I said, people complaining about thirty-five thousand, even though that's not a, uh, something to swallow at, but how come no one's complaining about, again, about the seven hundred and fifty thousand the Captain Newton's gonna get because he was bypassed for the chief's position when, uh, former Mayor Blackman appointed Delaney? That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Ordinance.
That's all at this time, Eric.
It is seen on the air, it's pushing.
Oh, you know what? One more hand, I apologize. So it says Town I T. I'm assuming this may be the library.
Someone from the library, I'd like to speak.
Yes, good evening. It's Judy Rugg, twenty-eight Audrey Place, Dover, New Jersey. This council has previously discussed and is on record that the thirty-year pilot programs were no longer acceptable. Also, how could this town receive, and this town should receive something in return? As previously stated by another, um, person tonight, we have no community center. I am here in the basement of our Dover Free Library to listen and to watch the meeting. Uh, also, an exorbitant amount of money is propos- is proposed for us residents and taxpayers to pay for the current War Two council member Sergio Rodriguez for the actions he had committed. The Constitution and the constituents have spoken loud and clear to all of us. Please, council, listen to the constituents. Listen and act in the correct manner, serving the constituents of Dover. Thank you.
End of this.
That's it at this point, Mayor.
All right, just wanted to comment on a couple of things. First, let's start with pilots. I, um, I think it's unfortunate that we had two previous council members who sat on this board, one being Carol Ruiz and one being, um, Judith Rugg, who want to sit here and complete hypocrites. Both of you are complete hypocrites, and I say that because, um, you sat on this council, you know what it is to, to, to give out pilots. The problem is that you want to portray to the public that pilots aren't good and then relying to the community. Well, let me explain to you, your administration under Mayor Blackman, um, negotiated the pilot program for Iron Ork. He negotiated the pilot for A East and Farland Street. In fact, when I came back in two thousand twenty-four, I opened that developer's agreement back up again because you did not, did not negotiate a community benefit. When I opened that benefit back up to Iron Ork, I, I sat on the planning board, I sat on this council, I brought that back to the table, and I said, you will not, as long as I'm here as mayor, you will not get away with not giving anything back to the town of Dover. In fact, I was able to get from them a five hundred thousand dollar, half million dollar giveback to the town of Dover to approve street lighting on Blackman Street. I was able to negotiate with them a one point five million dollar drainage facility to alleviate the flooding in the section of Salem and Blackwell. So there is a community benefit, but you had the opportunity to negotiate that and you failed. I did it when I came back. You also negotiated a pilot for luxury apartments, A East and Farland Street, Route forty-six, which is a disaster. That building does not belong there. It's completely out of character, out of place. It's a, an apartment building on a state highway. It makes absolutely no sense. Nice building, wrong location. So it's unfortunate that you want to sit here and portray to the public that benefit, that pilots are not a benefit to the community. And when we talk about schools, I want to be clear. Governor Murphy lifted the two percent cap on Boards of Education. In fact, this year, this governing body was saying with sixteen percent tax levy on the Board of Education. The school board tells the town council what the taxes are going to be attributed to the school system. We don't tell them. We're bound by the law. If they come back to us and they say it's fifteen million dollars, guess what? The number is fifteen million dollars. So pilots are good for the school system because that pilot program is coming back into the general fund of the town of Dover, or to wherever we allocate the money. And the community benefits are what this council negotiates. It's unfortunate that Mayor Blackman's council and administration didn't have the capability to negotiate a developer's agreement, but this council does because I negotiate with the developer. And there is a huge benefit that the town of Dover and the residents here. In fact, as we continue to move forward, every single project has a community benefit. Most of them now are per unit, so the more units they build, the more community giveback they will provide. Um, I think it's unfair to portray to this, to the, to the community and to the public that pilots are not good. In fact, I'm gonna take a minute here because tonight we have these several, um, ordinance on for pilots, and I want to now include our town planner and our redevelopment attorney, Alex Adardi, Dean Donatelli, who jumped in. And I want you guys to take a minute because, you know, I, I'll speak in layman's terms because I negotiated with these developers, I, I said, able. But you're the professionals, you understand pilots better, and hopefully you can explain it to the public so that when hypocritical comments come out, uh, that, that it's, it's, um, is, is disputed. So gentlemen, can you please jump in on pilots?
Certainly, Mayor. Um, Dean, if I may, just take, take, take a stab at it first. Uh, I wanted to say to the community that, that is attending and Mayor and Council, um, I'm very much aware of the sentiment about school-aged children. I'm very much aware of the data that came out of Rutgers, which is only focused on New Jersey real estate. It's not Nebraska, Oklahoma, Texas. It's, it's a hyper-focused study on New Jersey real estate and school-aged generated children. It's about as, as, as complex and, and as accurate as it can possibly be. It, it, we had Blaustein produce that, which is School of Planning, and then we had Rutgers, uh, Real Estate Division, um, which also produced a secondary, uh, uh, study, which is the hyper-focused one and most current one on school-aged children. I will say, um, I'm very aware of, of the issues, um, especially the, as Mary mentioned, the tax levy that was increased for the school. We're not here to produce school-aged children. Uh, we want to give back to community by bringing underutilized property, property that has little to no real in- intrinsic value to the community as a whole, or, or underperforms, things that can turn the community around and bring disposable income to the businesses downtown, which I gotta say Dover's, Dover's got a strong downtown. A lot of downtowns across the U S, uh, aren't so lucky as Dover. We don't have too many vacancies in our downtown. But at the end of the day, um, you know, businesses need to grow, they need to thrive, rents are only going up, taxes are only going up, costs of goods and services and, and payroll are only going up. A, a, a town is a business, it needs to grow. We're trying to grow smart and, and sustainable by only focusing redevelopment in, in, in the downtown area. This is not redevelopment in your neighborhoods and residential streets. This is your downtown area, and I think we can all collectively agree, there are many properties in the downtown area that are under, underutilized and underperformed. Um, and these are the areas we're looking to do. As far as some of the, the community givebacks and concerns, I am actively looking to partner, um, and, and encourage those who want to invest in the town to find us that parking deck, to find us that community center, to find us that new town hall, and that it does come through redevelopment process through the pilot programs. One thing I will say is Dean Donatelli is, is very attuned with our tax assessors, with the, the performers. If our properties are producing X amount in, in ad lorm taxes today, the pilot has to outperform what the town is gonna get today, because, Mayor, to your point, when the school budget is passed by the state, you have to pay that bill irrespective of, of what your budget is. That pilot money does essentially, if you don't have the revenue to pay it, you're, you're gonna use that pilot money to pay the school. Um, I will say, um, I do work in code enforcement. I'm not seeing the, the address verification for the schools. I don't know how the school is busting out at the seams when the last redevelopment project here is, is Meridia and, and One Thompson. I don't know where all the school-aged children are coming from. I do know code enforcement is actively, every week, finding properties that are overcrowded, that, that, that are, there are children involved with the overcrowding conditions. Um, these redevelopment projects are tailored for one and two bedrooms, so we can find homes, of suitable homes, for, for any, anyone who is living in unsafe, uh, in, in, in conditions, as well as bringing a population that's gonna support and, and merge with the Dover community by way of living in the downtown. Some of these redevelopment projects might be tight on parking. Uh, we are actively opening, uh, the new parking program. Where if they need a parking permit, it's again revenue for the town. If you come to Dover and you live in this apartment complex, and you have a car and you need more parking, you, the town will get that revenue through the parking permit. I, I'm not trying to shortside the town through redevelopment. Um, I'm very transparent on what these redevelopment projects are. I can stand behind them. I do not have a vote as far as redevelopment, but, but I have a keen eye for redevelopment, and, and so does Dean Donatelli when it comes to the pilots, when it comes to the RDAs and the community benefits. Those are all outlined in the R D A. If the, it's based on a unit percentage, so if you come in with, you know, a hundred units, and we're negotiating anywhere from a thousand to two thousand, uh, dollars per community benefit obligation per unit, we're gonna outline where that money's spent, to that rec center, to in clean up the streets, new, new streetlights, street trees, you know, to a G I T program, to whatever that cost may be, that we can agree upon how that money will be spent. But I can assure you, the redevelopment is a benefit to, to, to the town of Dover, and truthfully, some of this property, most of this property is in the hands of private development and private ownership, and when somebody acquires it for an exorbitant amount of cost and they want to turn this project over to something viable, we also have to be sensitive to, is this project gonna perform? Can we encourage developer to trust and build in Dover and invest this money in Dover without going belly up and it's foreclosed where we see a project that's still under construction and never gets complete because money dried up? There's a lot of moving parts to this, but redevelopment is a good thing, and pilots certainly bring with it a benefit, and that money at a pilot will, will be spent within the community, you know, whether it's growing a department, whether it's providing services for the community, finding that community center. That's what the pilot revenue is for, and again, if the school budget is passed by the state and it comes back to the town, it's fifty million dollars, fifteen million dollars, and you need to tap in as administration to meet that obligation, you're gonna pull in to that pilot fund. But that money goes back into the community. Um, that's really what I have to say about the pilot. Um, it's an incentive for developers to come into a market that really isn't a triple, triple A market. Um, it's not a Moorestown, it's not a Hope, Okin, these are untested waters this far west. Um, and, and at the end of the day, some of these projects are large, and they need a little incentive to come in, but I assure you, the money that comes from that pilot is outperforming the current ad lorm tax. Um, and with that, I'll, I'll kick-
I'll say this, yeah, I want to take a minute because if you can support, I was, um, and you know that- I was um, and you know that can be difficult when we're sitting at a table with developers in negotiation. The the thing I want to break people's attention, I had a developer say to me that we um it's hard to build in a town like Dover. Um, there's eight towns, three towns, and there's C towns. If you go to an A town, it costs the same amount of money to build a project in an A town as you do in a C town. The difference is the rents that come in. In an A town, you might get thirty-five hundred dollars for a two-bedroom. In a C town, this is from developers, you may get two thousand dollars rental back. So with the cost of construction and the cost of these projects that built today, there has to be a return on investment. We met with a, uh, Alex, we met with a developer yesterday, in fact. Um, major developer that came in and gave us a form up and showed us exactly what the project would cost. And I'll throw the number out there, it was two hundred and fifty-four million dollars to build a project. And he was running on a three percent margin, going out to three percent margin. They cannot build a project on a two and a half to three percent margin. If you if you're gonna invest two point five, uh, two hundred and fifty million dollars, you're gonna, if you could get ten percent of your money in bank, you don't need to go out and take that huge risk. There's a huge risk when you commit and you start to spend fifty, a hundred, two hundred million dollars on a project, so there has to be a return on investment. It's it's it's, you know, the ABCs of redevelopment. But I think it's important for the public to understand that we are not here to sell up the town to developers. We are here to get a benefit to the town um from these developers. And whether it's a new community center, whether it's a parking deck, whatever it might be, um, we are negotiating that with all of these RDAs.
And and I want to say, Mayor, to your point about A ratings and and C ratings, it also is the interest you get in your loans as well that that also plays a factor. Um, but I will say, I had this conversation many times, I had one uh recently, earlier today. With all due respect, Dover was the king on the mountain many, many, many years ago. I want to bring that back, that economic growth, that that development. We we look to other towns for shared services and support. In my opinion, these towns should be coming to Dover. I I'm trying to bring back that 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 Dover pride, if you will, to reclaim that 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 king on the on top of the mountain. This is the last stop going west with a direct New York Transit line um to Manhattan. This town has great potential, developers see it, they know it. But again, we're not, we're we're not where we need to be, these projects, you said. And I believe that developer also was coming out of pocket nearly fifteen, fifty million dollars of his own money because he believes that Dover, long term, is a sure bet. But right now, you know, how do you encourage developer to come out of pocket fifty million, two hundred and fifty million dollars to to develop in a town that's gonna bring you a brand new uh uh park, you know, uh, parking decks? And there's no incentive otherwise to do so because, like you said, he could take that money and go elsewhere. Um, but I will say, for purposes of 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 this conversation, the the overall redevelopment and pilot, um, the money goes back to the community.
All right, just um Dean, do you want to add anything? But keep it very brief because it just seems to me like we're falling upon deaf ears. I I I apologize, guys, but I continue to ask you to to explain to the public what pilots uh do for our community and what benefit they have. But it seems like we're we're preaching to the choir here because it's the same individuals that continue to come up here and and say how bad pilots are when they had an opportunity to negotiate the pilots and failed to do so. You know, when you look at this sports flex complex that they negotiated, that is probably the worst, absolute worst pilot I've ever seen in my life. I don't think anybody could fill that that, but yet they did. And so we are not those people negotiating these pilots and we will never let that happen.
And real quick, Dean, before you jump in, the pilot, let's talk about a big redevelopment project coming in. As soon as they get the CO, they're gonna get taxed at full ad lorm tax and they don't even have the occupancy in there. You know what I mean? So it does help.
You know what, Alex, that's, I I I'm gonna stop you there for a second because I changed that. If you recall, we sat in these meetings and we said, when you get a CO, you're going to pilot, it's gonna start. That's not true anymore.
But I'm saying if we don't do the pilot.
Now we have a drop dead date, we no longer wait for COs. If you don't have that project done by a drop dead date, you are going to start to pay that pilot, whether the project is complete or not. And if you don't pay it, we put a date restriction on it.
Right, I understand. I'm running a scenario, if there's no pilots on the table and they build a big redevelopment project like the Meridia and they're gonna get hit with full ad lorm tax with no occupancy in that building. And that's where these projects become belly up.
But even if they're not completed now, if a pilot, if they're completed by the drop.
Dean, you have anything to add?
Uh, so yes, goo- good evening, uh, council. For the record, my name is Dean Donatelli, I'm the redevelopment attorney for the for the town. And I think it's probably best for me to speak um with with regard to a specific matter on the agenda. Um, and I could kind of quote numbers, I could cite numbers for you relative to that ordinance, which is on for first reading, so normally we wouldn't have a presentation. But I can give you the specifics on that project and point out to you um uh, what the what the financial benefits are and what the what the uh, you know, community benefits are. That that happens to be ordinance, uh, item D on in the ordinances and there's also a redevelopment agreement uh for res- on the resolution section. I mean, that putting those two things together, Mayor, I think that might, rather than talking the abstract, I could talk specifically regarding those uh, uh, regarding that development.
That's fine, Dean, just try to be brief because there's really, um, again, we're just pretty clear apart.
And can I can I just say a couple words before this? Because I don't think this is necessary, Dean. Uh, my comments to all this is I don't think any of this, this conversation for the past fifteen minutes has been completely unnecessary. And what I'm trying to say here is that we keep doing this every single time. And so we need to stop because, like the mayor said, it's all on deaf ears. And and my message to the to Maria Chacon and Carol Ruiz, you guys gotta stop. Like, it's come to a point where we are literally just repeating the same things over and over, pilot after pilot. Everything you say, you literally say at every single meeting and then we repeat everything and it's just the same. Please stop. Maria Chacon, Carol Ruiz, your concerns are valid. Nobody is saying that your concerns are invalid, they're very valid. All those concerns we all have up here. And we're all fighting for those same concerns. If you think about it, we're on the same team, Carol Ruiz and Maria Chacon. So what I'm asking of you guys, please, because listen, my time is done here and I'm kind of glad for it because this is, this is, this is plural. But my message to you guys is please stop it. Come to town hall during the week, sit down with Alex. He will make the time for you both, he will take those concerns and he will update you as to why, how we are fighting for those concerns. Because that's what we're doing every single day, our professionals are doing that every single day, Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to four-thirty P M. So please, can we stop this for the sake of the community? Please just come together, come and sit down with our professionals and let's get on the same page because we are all on the same page, but this whole thing, guys, has to stop. Uh, to to the financials that Dean is trying to say, I've been saying, let's publish those financials up, so let's just stop talking about it.
So, Mr. Mr. uh, Councilman Rodriguez, I will say something new that hasn't really been said. I'm in those meetings and 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 I will say that the mayor does negotiate. Like, I've never seen with these developers, just when I think I've gotten everything out of the developer, we sit down, I bring a redevelopment project forward and the the mayor's renegotiating on better terms that I didn't think was possible. So I will say, again, these redevelopment projects, these pilots, these community benefit uh uh fees, you know, you you have a mayor who knows what redevelopment is, who can negotiate better terms. Um, and and I don't have the power to speak for the town and and what what that is, but I will tell you, the mayor is not letting any redevelopment come into town if it doesn't benefit by way of of a community benefit and if those pilots do not generate more income than otherwise as it currently stands. So I will say, the negotiations at the table are strong. Um, and 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 I do agree with you, um, uh, we've talked about it once or twice in the past. Uh, we can put a graph together that show what the ad lorm tax is today and what this pilot generates for the community that can be spent within our community. So again, you want those roads paved? This is how we get this stuff done at 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 large scale with this kind of pilot money.
All right, thanks, Alex. Let's let's just move on because we're we're in the middle. Okay, thank you, Dean, we'll catch up to you in a little bit. Have a safe trip, love. There there's, okay, none of those ambushes to the public and the toward which is for first reading. But ordinance forty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, ordinance to the mayor and council town of Dover, county and state interiorly, document redevelopment plans for the properties designated as block eighteen oh four, block thirteen on official tax map.
Councilmember Tapia?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Santana?
Yes.
Councilmember Scarnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Tapia?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Toro?
Yes.
Councilmember Vales?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitner?
Yes.
Fair enough.
Yes. We have ordinance forty-nine, two thousand twenty-five, ordinance establishing minimum and maximum range salary compensation to officers and employees in the town of Dover.
Mayor, I'd like to actually um pull this ordinance, um, we received this at five thirty-nine P M. Um, I would say twenty-one before the meeting starts, it's not a time to review. Uh, while this redevelopment discussion was happening, I was just thinking of the year to the last year's salary ordinance and the ones for the new ones for this year. I haven't even got through it, I can imagine everybody else.
So, and you, this came from, did you have any, what was it for this to that, please?
Capes is, uh, this is required for our uh insurance company in order for our deductible to stay low. It wanted this to be on the agenda today. All we did, last year's ordinance to this ordinance, let's do a three percent increase.
Across the board.
And just turn it across the board and just change some of the time. Across the board here, so we did, I didn't say. It's exactly across the board.
Uh, there were some that had not been increased. I've gone through the previous work.
And we started on the feet, our office station, they're good. Anybody that are storage in right there, we want to hear the word, please.
So we pull up through this, Director of Municipal Services and Public Works, that's filled, yes. Director of Recreation, that's filled. Um factors, maintenance workers, mechanics, uh.
So listen, if 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 this is required by uh the insurance company today and there's something else that needs to be changed, we have an opportunity to change it again, right? This is not the end of the world. For for your doctors tonight to satisfy like the deductible for the insurance company, then if we find something in there, we'll be back and bring back, we'll bring back.
Yeah, we can also talk to the VP, which I got around the line, we need to talk to VP, our HR, which will work on this thing. Can we make sure that any position that is early active, there exists for a board? And can we also make where titles are updated? Can we make sure that if there's any future position, those are here, listen?
All right, so we'll work with it, we have to change in the future, we'll change it. We are against for that, I'm from, I'll make that change. And most excited, we'll hold this.
Councilmember Tapia?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Santana?
Yeah.
Councilmember Scarnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Tapia?
Councilmember Toro?
Yes.
Councilmember Vales?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitner?
Yes.
Fair enough.
Yes. Uh, ordinance fifty, two thousand twenty-five, and this is town Dover County, New Orleans, State of Jersey, approving a pilot application and authorizing the mayor to execute a financial agreement to our asset or with renewal, I will see if the property designated as block twelve oh five, lot four, five, six, and seven on the official tax map from town of Dover.
Normally, we just introduce them to part of the public hearing, we discuss a bit of ordinance since you can. Alex, you still off?
Yes, I'm here.
Alex, will you? You don't even go there, you say, and you discuss the benefit.
Yeah.
But if you're not specific.
You know, obviously, this this uh um, the group of lots needs to be redeveloped, I'm not doubting that at all. Um, do you have any insight on what um benefits are being offered to the community if we're in this pilot? If I'm not.
I I couldn't hear you, Ms. Ms. Whitner.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't speaking here, thanks to the microphone. Um, not at all doubting that this uh project needs to be done. I'm just wondering if you have any insight on some of the uh community benefits you might see from this particular.
So, um, there's another one on this agenda as well. If you recall, the last hearing, um, when we talked about the overall Basset Highway redevelopment plan, there's a lot of public improvement, so the community benefit um would, um, and Dean has the RDA, um, has negotiated the RDA. But from my understanding, the community benefit fees will go towards enhancing and manifesting our vision for the Basset Highway uh redevelopment vision plan. Uh, you know, it typically goes towards, you know, a greater, a greater off-track improvement for the community as a whole.
Yeah, council, council, let me get, let me give you some detail. Can you hear me okay? It's Dean Donatelli here.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
So, so there are two pieces to this redevelopment. The first one, you're considering now, which is the ordinance to approve the financial agreement. Later on in the agenda, there's a redevelopment agreement. In the redevelopment agreement is where we lay out what the community benefit fees are. But I'm gonna take a moment to just to explain to you the financial agreement. Please stop me if I I'm going into too much detail. The project is fifty, fifty-two units, it's a mix of, uh, there are several three bedrooms, but mostly, uh, two, two bedrooms, one bedrooms and studios and and weighted heavily towards one bedrooms and studios. The property now, and if you want to take notes in the public, you can, because I want to try to deal with some of the questions that were raised or comments that were made. Um, the property now generates thirty-three thousand dollars total uh to the, uh, for all four lots. It's four separate lots, there's an existing, there are existing buildings there. This is a rehabilitation project. I think there is an existing, there's existing forty-eight units and there are forty uh uh forty-four units and they're increasing the number to fifty-two units, so it's an existing building being reapped. Currently pays fifty-two, fifty, I'm sorry, thirty-three thousand dollars a year in taxes. In ye- in year three of stabilization, the project under the pilot, the town will receive one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars net. That's, everything goes to the town in pilot revenue. That's one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in pilot revenue to the town in year three under under the pilot. If we did not, if if we did not grant the pilot and the project were built anyway, which it wouldn't be, but if we assume that it would be built, um, the the town would receive one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So if you do the math, that's twelve thousand dollars less the town would receive than it would receive under the pilot. Over the thirty years, it's a thirty-year pilot, the town receives one million, two hundred and forty thousand dollars more under a pilot scenario than under a non, a non-pilot scenario. That is, if the project were were built, but which it would not be, but if it were built and no pilot were granted, the town would rece- the town would receive under the pilot one point two four uh million dollars more. Terms of the community benefit, these councilwomen, um, this is, that's under the financial agreement, which I just described to you, under the redevelopment agreement, which is on the resolution part of your agenda. The developer uh must build a project in in uh in three years. If they don't, this is what the mayor was getting at earlier, when he negotiated, if they don't and the project is delayed and the town is is uh is not receiving the pilot revenue that was anticipated, the developer pays additional amounts to uh extend the completion date of the project because we want things built here. Um, that's the goal. Um, so that's the extension payments, those are twenty five, twenty thousand dollars for three months for a total of eighty thousand dollars to extend the project uh completion date for a year. Aside from, in addition to that, sixty-six thousand dollars is paid uh to the town as a community benefit fee to go with what Alex was referring to. Uh, roadway improvements, uh, street, street uh improvements, uh, safety, flooding mitigation. So the project developer pays sixty-six thousand dollars, thirty, half of that at the at building permit. That's thirty-three thousand dollars a building permit, thirty-three thousand dollars at uh at CEO. So tho- those are, those are the numbers. I just want to add a a couple of things. So those are what the town is getting in return. Um, one, one question is raised is why don't we do twenty years versus thirty years? And I know we've said this before, uh, the the pilot rate increases over uh over the term of the pilot. In this case, the first ten years, it's ten percent of annual gross revenue. The second ten years, years twenty-one, uh, uh, twenty-one to to, uh, I'm sorry, eleven to twenty is uh eleven percent and the last ten years is twelve percent. So the town is making uh uh more money uh the longer the pilot goes. If you shorten it, the town would still uh come come out ahead. But uh it i- in the long run, the town makes more with with the longer pilot. Um, and one, one thing I wanted to add, uh, and this is more of a general comment, is developers, when they come to a town, they they really look, uh, and I know that, I know the comments that were made by the public and many of the members of the public know the town much better than I do. Um, but the town, developers come in, they they really want to look for certainty. They want to know with that, when they, when they come before the council on day one for whatever it is. on day one for whatever it is, the project, the first step is, which we've gone through before, but whatever that first step is, they wanna know that they're gonna get from step one to step ten, because they're gonna be investing a lot of dollars on, on soft costs, about design development, uh, their due diligence, uh, a, a financial analysis. So the, the more, uh, uncertainty there is in the eyes of the developer, you're actually, the town is, for lack of a better way to put it, we're hurting ourselves, because if a developer sees, some people say, I want this, some people say, I don't want that, I don't know what I want, um, the, the developer's gonna say, well, you know what, I'm gonna go to a town where they know what they want, they, they, I'm gonna invest my dollars in this town and know that I'm gonna get to the finish line and, and produce what, what I, what, what, what's, what I think is a win-win. Town gets the development and, and, and the developer gets, you know, their return on their investment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scarnio.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, if you could, if I could just ask one question on that, um, I just wanna thank the councilwoman for asking that question, that was a very valid question, and thank you, Dean, for the response. But, um, I guess my question would be, to the councilwoman that asked that same question, was what was the community benefits that we got for the other pilots approved under Blackman?
Um, well, I don't think much has happened, so.
Well, listen, I, I don't think we need to go down that road, we've been down that road. The, the, the bottom line is that there, there weren't, um, that's, that's the bottom line, the poor county community get back, so I think that's why Santa's asked the question. And I can, I can assure you that, you know, it's, it's, it's amazing, but when you start to talk about soft costs, uh, and I, I'm gonna go back to the I N R project, because we have a blank site down here now, where we're trying to get the developer to, to, to build the project. When I came back in two thousand twenty-four, that project happened in front of this council seven times, seven times. Every time you go back in front of a council, there's a lot of soft costs involved, and you touched on that, Dean. You have your engineers, you have your planners, you have your architects, you have traffic studies, it's just, this is the whole effect on these developers. Developers are not gonna come to a town if they know they have to come to a, a board of adjustment, planning board, or a town council ten times, it's not gonna happen. You could rack up millions and millions of dollars, and I N R is the classic project that that happened to. By the time I came back and got the approval on that project, it's an eighty-five million dollar project, you cannot do that project with private equity, you must go out and get the funding for that project. Unfortunately, that eighty-five million dollars dried up, and that's why we don't have a project now at the corner of Salem, uh, Salem and Blackwell. We are currently soliciting new developers to come in, purchase that property, and make that project come to fruition, but you cannot drag your feet when it comes to redevelopment, because somebody else is gonna take that developer away from you and bring it to another town. It's that simple. Uh, we need to be aggressive on it, and the last thing I'm gonna touch on in redevelopment, when you look at these pilots, aggressive, uh, increase of ten, eleven, twelve, when you look at those numbers now, Dean, you're not looking at that same number thirty years from now. And I say this consistently, a million dollars today is not a million dollars thirty years from now. It's on the growth of money at that currency at that point, but a million dollars today could certainly be worth one point five or two million dollars. So those numbers continue to grow on that gross revenue, so. This is a win-win for the town, all the, all these pilots, so. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we're in fifty, roll call, please.
Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Tapia? Councilmember Toro?
Yes.
Councilmember Vales?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitner?
Yes.
Mayor, uh.
Interesting. Uh, ordinance fifty-one, two thousand twenty-five, and ordinance of the mayor town council, in Dover County, New York State, New Jersey, commending chapter two thirty-six land use and development, encoded Dover by establishing a historic reservation, which. Make a motion, second, roll call, please.
Yes.
You?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tapia?
Yes.
Councilmember Toro?
Yes.
Councilmember Vales?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitner?
Yes.
Mayor, uh.
Yes. Okay, we have approval of bills list, resuscitation of the eight two thousand twenty. Second.
My usual, um, page twenty-eight, five dash zero two seven three eight. Um, it's a reimbursement for the SOA of B B A local law seven. Um, so, it's for the flight, a card, a hotel, a movie. This for one of our, like, higher officers, I'm not guessing.
It was for one of our employees, but we, we, we said, sure, there's one other office.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, and then backtracking to page nineteen. I brought my laptop, basically. Uh, page nineteen, um, two, first sort of at the bottom, twenty-five dash zero two nine zero three, uh, special counsel for the law office of Edward Blenkis, giving the amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And, uh, for twenty-five dash zero two nine zero two, uh, uh, invoice for the law office of, uh, Christopher, Dan, Dan, sorry, um, and that's the amount of nine thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars, um, pursuant to resolutions one fourteen dash twenty-five and one thirteen dash twenty twenty-five, I would like those to move separately.
So it's twenty-five dash zero two nine zero three and zero two nine zero two.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, so on the, uh, bills list, go to the, on the entire bills list, with the exception of two five zero two nine zero two, nine zero. Motion and second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fazio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Santana?
Yes.
Councilmember Scarnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Tapia?
Yes.
Councilmember Toro?
Yes.
Councilmember Vales?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitner?
Yes.
Mayor, uh.
Stay. Yeah, we have, uh, a solution. So, two five zero two nine zero two, I will make that motion. Roll call.
Councilmember Thacia?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Santana? Councilmember Scarnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Tapia?
No.
Councilmember Toro?
Yes.
Councilmember Vales?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitner?
No.
Mayor, uh.
Yes. Two five dash zero two nine zero. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Thacia?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Santana? Councilmember Scarnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Tapia? Councilmember Toro? Councilmember Vales?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitner?
No.
Mayor, uh.
Yes, let, let me just say, obviously, it passed. I'm still gonna make comments on this. I still am a firm believer that Sergio was a target of the Dover Police Department, I'll say above it. The day that this initially happened, I was called into the office when the all implication occurred, I'm like, you know what, public under sentence. Because I've said it could happen to any one of us sitting on this council. And it's wrong, what happened. When I was called into the office by the chief of police, I was told that Sergio Rodriguez was going to be charged with assault. And I asked a simple question, are you going to charge the other individual? And the answer was no, no. And I honestly believe that this occurred because Sergio continued to call the police department to address the concerns in the Meridia project. Had Sergio not called, the outcome would have been different. Sergio became a target, as it's clear to me, and I believe that Dover had an obligation to defend him. The hypocrisy in this town runs rampant. We sit here complaining, we had council members, we had council member Whitner sit up here, we had, uh, council member Judith Rubs sit up here and vote to promote Chief Delaney, Captain Delaney to chief, knowing that Bill Newton was a superior officer, resulting in a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar settlement to Captain Newton. So you can sit up here and you can say, yeah, thirty thousand dollars is the bottom line to defend a councilman, but what I believe became a target. But not one person is sitting up here complaining that the taxpayer spent seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to appoint a chief, knowing it was wrong, knowing that Captain Newton was a superior officer. So the hypocrisy runs deep, you can sit here and throw darts, but you should look in the mirror, because it's very clear to me that, whatever the outcome is, the outcome is now, we know, and we're doing our best for the benefit of this town as a whole. But it's very difficult when we have individuals sit here and criticize other people for exactly what they did, and it's unfortunate. We also have a former councilwoman that's coming up here, that will be, uh, sitting up here in July, that collected a paycheck sitting in this town as a councilwoman, while she was on the workers' comp. That's illegal in the state of New Jersey. And unfortunately, nothing was done by the previous council, but I can assure you, when Councilwoman Rubs gets back up here, I will do something about it, because it's corruption, that's worse. And so we could sit here tonight, we could complain about spending taxpayer money to defend a councilman, but I wanna know how you would feel if it was any one of you that were in his shoes and that occurred, because it was not right, it was wrong, we're gonna put it behind us, and we're gonna move on for the benefit of our community. But I think the right thing to do tonight was to settle this. The first case was dismissed, and the second, too, looked very promising to be awfully dismissed as well. And if in fact that's the case, and I know I can't go into details of it, if in fact that's the case, I then hope people realize what was done here.
Mayor, just to correct it for the record, the second case was dismissed, and I just wanna make it also clear for the record, the facts is that not one individual or resident of the town of Dover, this community, has ever charged me of any wrongdoing. The only charging that has ever been done is by the Dover Police Department. And that is the only reason why all of this would fall under my duties as a councilman. Because if one person from the community would have charged me, it would have been a different story, but only the Dover Police Department charged me. And like the mayor, mayor said, they were selective in their charging.
Thank you for clarifying, and for the, I think, support for the public to really understand, it's easy to, to sit here and complain, but up here, one person, like Bob Ragan said earlier tonight, not one person that sat on this council, sat up here when it went, when Captain Newton scored seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for not being awarded what he should have. What's wrong? Went to our consent agenda resolutions, resolution twenty-nine approving annual bill of all license for celebrity bar, and resolution two ninety approving social affair permit for Pasco. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Thacia?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Santana?
Yes.
Councilmember Scarnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Tapia?
Yes.
Councilmember Toro?
Yes.
Councilmember Vales?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitner?
Yes.
Mayor, uh.
Yes. Resolution two ninety-one, and in contract, Pasco's bidding for small cities, road construction. There. Roll call.
Councilmember Thacia?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Santana?
Yes.
Councilmember Scarnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Tapia?
Yes.
Councilmember Toro?
Yes.
Councilmember Vales?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitner?
Yes.
Mayor, uh.
Yes, resolution two ninety-two authorizing a discharge important to the refill fish program with, with the, with Halloween.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilmember Thacia?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Santana?
Yes.
Councilmember Scarnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Tapia?
Yes.
Councilmember Toro?
Yes.
Councilmember Vales?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitner?
Yes.
Mayor, uh.
Yes, resolution ninety-three twenty-five designated by Morris O C F Property Development Corporation to L C S redevelopment of certain property, and the town authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement by Morris O C F Property Development Company to L C redevelopment of certain property, pending the town. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Thacia?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Santana?
Yes.
Councilmember Scarnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Tapia?
Yes.
Councilmember Toro?
Yes.
Councilmember Vales?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitner?
Yes.
Mayor, uh.
Yes, resolution ninety-four, that's twenty-five designated to L C S redevelopment. If town, or person, the execution of a redevelopment agreement with K R S set for redevelopment service. Roll call. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Thacia?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Santana?
Yes.
Councilmember Scarnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Tapia?
Yes.
Councilmember Toro? Councilmember Vales?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitner?
Yes.
Mayor, uh.
Interesting. Ninety-five, two thousand twenty-five, one, two, three, four. I'm gonna remember this, it's in our play.
Uh, Mayor, are the amendments today?
Okay. Okay, there are some.
None is placed, it, it returns from updates, they have not been updated since about twenty eighteen. So it was necessary to get the update signed, uh, before the end of the year. So we just got it back from council, uh, earlier today. And that's where we put it on the agenda, uh, basically, updated every, uh, basically, a lot of them was there, and things that were no opportunity for this in the attorney, just about this issue.
So, the handle was updated in twenty twenty-three, um, when it was updated, the council each received a copy while advancing the meeting to be able to review the changes. So I don't know what changes we are approving, because they are not listed on this resolution.
Uh, Vicky, would you like to, uh, talk to, about that, since, uh, we just got the update started here today?
Chair, is there, could we do it on a knife? Is there a deadline that we need to worry about? You said you have the ear up. Vicky, can you unmute yourself and let us know?
Yes, yes, I'm on, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, okay, so, I, I was told this afternoon that we had to put this on the agenda to avoid higher copays. Um, so that, that's why I could, I have a red line addition that I can certainly share with everybody.
This is for, and, and why was it on the agenda to avoid increased copays for the employees?
For the town, for the town.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
So that, that's why there was a rush on it.
I assume it's related to our liability insurance.
That's correct.
That they will have to argue this. So if we update this today, um, and there's an issue that needs to be addressed, we can amend it? Is that accurate?
Yes.
So there's no warrant updating it today, and if there's something that you say, anything as the other one said, or something else that you come up with? Yeah? I think, no, I, I, I don't have an issue. All right, so that's what we'll do. We have a motion and a second. And if it needs to be amended, we amend it. No, if we found out today that the insurance was an issue, then we have to, we have to address it. That's, we have to issue her. Yeah. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Thacia? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Santana?
Yes.
Councilmember Scarnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Tapia?
Yes.
Councilmember Toro?
Yes.
Councilmember Vales?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitner?
Yes.
Mayor, uh.
Yes. We pay any older, big business, but if. Just ask that new business is, uh, I've gotten some residents' concerns on Liberty Street and speeding. Um, at Liberty Street, as you know, it's one of those crossovers, and it's very hill, it's very, it's a very big hill, so on the way down, they get, they catch speed. So I was wondering, what, what kind of progress can you start to see if we can evaluate that street? Any, uh, speed calming? The rest is a little.
Actually, they don't, it's already something scheduled to be made next year, isn't it?
Liberty's, we have to.
Well, is that, yeah, that was filtered on it.
So, yeah, if it was just paid, then there's gonna be speed bumps.
There's gonna be speed bumps?
Yeah.
I spoke to those about any of those streets up in that area that would get speed, speed bumps for.
I think, yes.
They will absolutely get me. Sounds for, just.
Just for, I guess, certification, since that's a hill, which obviously speed bumps go to bond. Look, if it war finds out.
Right, there's definitely criteria, we've seen if your regulations said they're going to place in certain locations. There's a, um, I don't know percentage of incline. You can put them in the hills, as you know, in your word, we have them on Berry Street or in the hill. I don't know, the Berry Sea Park, I doubt it, but there'll be, there's a certain um percentage that is rated here. But Bill, Bill has a lot of that.
Well, thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, this time, I'll open this question for the public on any other, maybe, just a minute, please, wait a minute.
Alright, we're gonna start, we're gonna start with T C McCourt.
T C McCourt.
Good evening, T C McCourt, thirty-two Davis Avenue, um, I'm so glad, um, Mayor, that you mentioned again, your displeasure with the uh prior administration's hiring of Chief Delaney. Um, I'm curious, uh, because I've never heard this mentioned, and maybe you know because I don't. Um, I'm curious if if we're ever going to hear, um, for instance, uh, how Chief Delaney and Captain Newton both scored on their exams. Um, I'm curious if, you know, that went into the decision to hire Chief Delaney over Captain Newton. Um, I'm wondering if there was any reasons behind that, I I would certainly expect there to be because I would not um be happy with any elected official um who did something that went afoul of policy, um, regulation or law, regardless of who they were, whether I supported them or not. Um, so I think that's a, that's an important clarification that we should probably make going forward so that the public knows exactly why it was that Chief Delaney was chosen over anybody else. And perhaps once that's disclosed, um, the mayor can can finally let the public know why it is he would have preferred someone else over Chief Delaney. Um, secondly, um, Mayor, I just, I have to commend you on your unfailing loyalty uh to Councilmember Rodriguez. It is truly admirable. I think it is something that others could could learn from. Uh, you certainly have have continued to live the the phrase that you uttered to me immediately after the first incident, um, which is that you never kick a man while he's down. So good for you, Mayor, um, I'm sure Sergio will will appreciate that loyalty going forward when the council continues to have to approve his legal bills when he's no longer a member of council.
Alright, next up is going to be Maria Chacon.
Maria Chacon.
Um, hello, could you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, I feel so disappointed that um that we're actually gonna be paying for Sergio Rodriguez's legal fees, even after he's gone. Um, I feel that he's very, very lucky that he has a mayor that um in his board that approves this on our backs because we are gonna be paying, we, the taxpayers, the homeowners, will be paying for his legal fees for something that he got charged for, so I'm just gonna read what he was charged for as part of my statement. Dover councilman charged with criminal coercion. This is from the Morris County Prosecutor's Office. Morris County Prosecutor Robert Carroll and Chief of Detectives Rob- Robert McNally announced that Sergio Rodriguez, twenty-nine of Dover, has been charged with criminal coercion, a crime of the fourth degree following an investigation by the Morris County Prosecutor's Office. Rodriguez, who is a member of the town of Dover Council, is alleged to have identified himself as a public official in order to intimidate a liquor store owner and employee into seizing the sales of alcohol to specific individuals. Rodriguez is alleged to have entered the Dover business on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, informing an employee that the store's liquor license would not be renewed if they continued to sell alcohol to individuals seen drinking in a nearby courtyard. The business owner spoke to Rodriguez at a later time and during what that conversation, Rodriguez allegedly reiterated that he was a councilman and could prevent the renewal of their liquor license if the owner did not comply with his demands. So this is a a charge on the fourth degree criminal coercion violation of NJSA two C thirteen dash five. Now, with this, you still wanna go down in flames. And it, I mean, you're gonna lose the next elections because of this? People are mad because of this, Sergio lost because of this, Judy won because of this, Chris won because of this, Daniela won because of this, and everything else that you're doing. So I beg you to do what's best for the community, not for rescued Dover, thank you.
Ray Haiduka?
Ray Haiduka.
Alright, good evening, everyone, uh, I'll be brief, I just want to comment on Chief Delaney's uh selection as chief. Well, I I have nothing negative to say about Captain Newton, here's some facts that I'm gonna point out. Captain Newton was hired approximately two years before him, however, they were uh Chief Delaney, and at the time, obviously, it was, they were both patrolmen, were promoted to sergeant on the very same day. Ironically, they were promoted to lieutenant on the very same day. They were both promoted to captain on the same day. And they had a tie on the civil service exam. Now, in a civil service town, the appropriate authority gets to, has a one and three rule. So they could select who they deem appropriate. There could be a variety of reasons why, you know, maybe the training file, uh, best performance, or maybe it was just a better interview. But they're they're well within their rights to pick a one, to pick one out of three of the eligible candidates. It's not a promotion list, it's an eligibility list. And at the time, they could select who they deem as best suited to serve in that position. I've never heard anyone say why Chief Delaney wasn't the best selection. In addition, he is a very good chief, he has the support of the state chiefs. I think it's time for everyone to sit down, reevaluate what's going on and see how this could be repaired. You need to support your police chief, you need to support your police officers. You have some fine men and women serving that agency. Constantly knocking them, it's just not doing anything for anyone. I think they, this could be worked out, and I think it, now all this litigation seems to be at least stopped temporarily, needs to be worked out. So thank you for your time, have a good evening, and a great Thanksgiving.
Next up is going to be Robert Branigan.
Robert Branigan.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, first of all, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to wish you and the council and your administration and all the town employees and everybody listening virtually a very happy and blessed Thanksgiving. Also, I'd like to give a special uh recognition to our town clerk Tara. As some of you may or may not know, she's soon as expecting her third child. She will soon be departing uh her position to begin her maternity leave. I think that the job that she has is uh nobody else would be able to do it as best as she can. It's not an easy job to run the office in a professional and smooth manner like she does, as well as deal with employees of the town. I've seen her on election night trying to uh pull her hair out, trying to match results from each district, election results. The floor looks like a Wall Street at the closing of the day. And I think she just certainly deserves a special recognition and perhaps maybe even a round of applause as she begins her maternity leave, she is a complete asset for the town, and we hope that she will return soon. Also, Mr. Mayor, we all know that one of the benefits of having you as mayor is because you're a business owner, you know how to negotiate. You know, President Trump once wrote a book called The Art of the Deal, and perhaps you should write Art of the Deal Part Two. On that, everybody have a happy and blessed Thanksgiving, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up is going to be the library.
Speaker from the library?
Yes.
Dominic Timpani? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
How we doing tonight, Mayor, Council? Um, I just wanted to thank Alex for his presentations, I mean, he does a great job. I mean, if I was young and single, I think I'd go get one of those apartments down there. But when you were speaking about the development, redevelopment, you broke it down into three categories, A, B, and C. I would assume A would be something like Jersey City, a whole bulk in, C would be something further out this way. I'll put Dover as D for Dover, not that Dover is less than anybody else. But with that being said, Dover has a stacking problem. And we want to keep building places, and he, he turned around and he explained that the downtown area, he wanted to eliminate cars because we have transit, we have trains, buses, taxis, and that's a great idea for one, two-bedroom apartments. But in reality, it's not gonna work in Dover. You know it's not gonna work in Dover, and that's why we have a hard time bringing developers in Dover. Perfect example, the Meridian Building, one, two bedrooms. We have five people living in one. Okay, he's on your board, Sergio Rodriguez, at the Meridian. That's stacking. Your own council member, and how dare you speak about the other administration and calling out people? It's just wrong, and I really hope you would change. With that being said, happy Thanksgiving, and I hope you all have a nice holiday, good night.
I believe we have one more from the library?
Is there someone else in the library?
Yeah, hi, Dennis Tui, twenty-three Passaic Street, Dover. Um, I want to touch on the existing pilots, not the future pilots. Um, who's in charge in town to collect the money that supposedly we have seven pilots, and when I looked at the the budget going back, it only showed that Meridian and um Gunther paid what they paid, it didn't show what the other five were paying. And I think it would um kind of cure things if that dollar figure for all seven pilots was made available for people to see the money that was collected, it seems like it's ghost money. Like, nobody knows what was collected, what was it put forward to, and and things of that nature, and I think that would kind of maybe put people at ease to see the monies that is collected. And also, I think going forward, that these builders should pay per unit, whether they're occupied or not occupied, because I think my belief is now they only pay the percentage on the occupied apartments, not on the whole building per se. So I think that would be things that if people saw would help, like I say, ease things. Also, we talk about Mr. Newton, Captain Newton, I've known Billy Newton since he was ten, okay? That the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, I believe the board had a vote on that. The people who represent us people out on the street, that they should have maybe said, hey, this is a little bit too much money for the town, maybe we could renegotiate, maybe we could make Captain Newton Deputy Deputy Chief Newton, since we don't have one. Maybe, and give him a raise, maybe that would have solved this issue instead of us shelling out seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So maybe that could have been negotiated a little bit better, but I don't think you should blame the town people for seven hundred fifty thousand. You board members voted on it, man, you said this is the money we should give this captain, so thank you, that's all I have, and yeah, have a nice Thanksgiving.
Next up, we have Edward Grimes.
Edward Grimes.
This latest election was a referendum against Dodd and his radical right-wing policies. On January first last year, the disabled community was locked out of the party that was thrown for New Year's. The disrespect of the disabled has got to stop in Dover, and now you have a disabled person on the council. During the election, there's a lot of rhetoric against gay and trans community, and it was absolutely disgusting. Well, that's got to stop, and now you have a trans woman on the council. There was a, a lot of stuff in the past about women misogyny. We've heard the videos of Mayor Dodd calling Mayor Blackman a C and a P's horrible things. Well, now you have more women on the council that you can deal with, Mayor Dodd. Are you gonna say the C word now? Say the C word now, Dodd, God, I dare you.
I don't want to be stupid. I don't wish. Anyone else?
Hey, you cut me off.
Yes, we did.
Alright, uh, Daniela Meza?
Daniela Meza?
Good evening, my name is Daniela Meza, I am um an employee of JBWS, the leading domestic violence agency in Morris County, and I'm also a resident of Dover, specifically the Meridia. And I come to this space because parking has been um an awful situation the last couple of weeks for me and my family, and I assume a lot of other residents in the building. Um, we, when we signed the lease, we signed the lease as three adults. Um, we were told that we could use the lot right across from the train tracks overnight at no cost, I did it once, I got a parking ticket. Um, and as of recent, um, we've been told that we're only allocated two parking spots, which doesn't make any sense because when we signed the lease, we signed the lease as three adults. It's not like there was, I was a child and I aged out, or um it's an overcrowded apartment, it doesn't make any sense. We've, um, Sergio has been trying to help us resolve this issue with the town, and the town wants to charge us the same amount the Meridia charges for a lot that's um over the daytime and overnight is covered. Um, insurance takes it into consideration, so I I come to this space for hopefully a solution. Thank you so much, and I also um want to um thank any housing information I can get in the future as I am the housing navigator for JBWS, and I'm always trying to connect our survivors to safe and stable, affordable housing, thank you so much.
That's all at this time, Mayor.
Uh, I'll close this question for the public, and I just want to comment on some of the um topics that were brought up here tonight. Um, I guess I'll start with the Maria Chacon in her comments against Sergio. Criminal coercion was brought against Sergio, I said it before and I'll continue to say it, because he was targeted. Sergio simply went into a liquor store and advised individuals as a council member, which he should do. And if Sergio is guilty of criminal coercion, then I should be in jail. Because it's our job as elected officials to go in and help establishments when they're given a loan. That's our job, that's what we're elected for. If we have a liquor store that's selling to minors, it's our obligation, hell no, listen to the seller for minors. By going into a liquor store and telling the individual that when your liquor license comes up for renewal, I'm not going to support it, that is not criminal coercion, that's the duties of an elected official. So I'm confident that case is, and you know, it's unfortunate that everyone wants to continue to come back and beat a dead horse, and I'm I'm done, I won't talk about it anymore because I had enough. It's a fact, it's a fact that he was doing his job as an elected official. When you want to talk about uh pilots, I mean, Dennis Tui mentioned the election of pilots, they should pay whether they're occupied or not, it's a matter of fact, I did that at the first project coming into Dover, which was Meridia. When I negotiated with George Cabodaglia, we did not know the market, it's uncharted territory, when they're gonna bring twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, twenty, two hundred dollars a month, we did not know. I am a very conservative, fiscally conservative person, I want to know what the benefit of the town was going to be. And the only way we could do was to come up with a two percent construction cost on that project, which equated to approximately about a half a million dollars a year in revenue from Meridia. When I left the office, the new administration called him in and said, we're not gonna accept your two percent construction cost anymore, we're going to go to a conventional pilot. That was not the original agreement, that's not the funding that they used to build that building as a fifty million dollar. We also negotiated the um infrastructure improvements of eight million dollars. The town bonded for the eight million dollars at one and a half percent, and we lent it to Meridia at three and a half percent. We were making two percent revenue on the eight million dollars, which would have totaled over ten years to approximately three hundred fifty thousand dollars. When the Blackman administration came in, they decided they were not gonna go with two percent construction cost anymore, and they wanted their eight million dollars back. What happened was, it forced a developer to sell the project. Capadaglia sold that project, and it's the only project he has ever sold, and he owns, I think, about six thousand apartments, four more. And so it's unfortunate, because the administration did not understand development or redevelopment, and they lost a great opportunity. Well, when they, when they, when they renegotiated the developers' agreement, they had only collected about sixty-seven thousand dollars in interest on the eight million, which they would have got three fifty if they'd applied to the term, but they decided not to. So that was a huge mistake on a pilot, and that's why we have to have people up here who understand what negotiation is when it comes to redevelopment. We also, um, uh, you know, I'm just gonna say this, I, I wasn't gonna talk about it, but I'm going to, to, um, Ray Haiduka, and I guess TC McCourt about Chief Delaney's promotion. If there was not merit to Newton's claim, there would not have been a settlement. I'm not gonna get into the details. I think Mr. Haiduka said it clearly, that Bill Newton had seniority. And that is unusual. Um, but that's it, um, but again, I'm, I'm not gonna continue to, to dwell upon that, we're gonna move on. Put capacity around this. Also, I wanna just address the parking room.
If we did, and it went to trial and it came out as four, the town of Dover would have been responsible for the entire settlement.
That's correct.
And not insurance company.
That is correct, and it's, you know, it's easy to play money wing quarterback when you're not sitting up here in these difficult decisions to make, but to Councilman Scardio's point, um, when the depositions were held in the lawsuit, not one person from that administration could answer why Chief Delaney was chosen over him. That clearly came back to us, not one person, including the mayor, would say why it was done. Um, many advice came back to us, just you better settle this for the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, because if you don't, this is going to go into millions against the town of Dover. And so that's why this board voted to settle at seven fifty, and also to Councilman Scardio's point, joint insurance fund are the ones who make that determination. If they request us to settle at a specific number, if we don't settle at that number, then the burden becomes one hundred percent on the taxpayers. So I think it was prudent for this town to accept that settlement and move on. But I'll go back to my original comment, if there was no merit to that case, there would not have been settlement. And lastly, I just wanted to, thank you. And I just went up on, real quickly, to Daniela Meza, who, who spoke about the parking issue. Um, I want Alex to jump back in, can you allow Alex to come back in? Cause Alex had worked very hard for over a year to develop a new parking structure for the town of Dover. So Alex, can you speak to, uh, Daniela's comment on the parking situation, and bid, bid us for lots, and also Meridia?
Certainly, so, I, I, there's, there's two items I'd like to address, i- if I can, certainly the parking, um. We are rolling out, as the community's aware, the new parking ordinance, um, so the residential neighborhoods, those that are overcrowding that have cars, they have to prove by valid C O C through code enforcement, and if vehicles have to be registered, so it's one step, one little hurdle to help, you know, deter the overcrowding, because they won't be able to park on the street. Now, that's not saying every property that's overcrowded will have that, um, that issue there, where they have to park on the street. I say it to say the next, code enforcement with Bill Island, coupled with council's, uh, um, office, are actively working right now to develop an ordinance for mayor and council to do annual rental inspections, again, to help safeguard the residents, the community, from this overcrowding issue that's there. So we are actively pursuing the overcrowding issue and the parking issue in neighborhoods. As far as the Meridia parking complex goes, um, all I can say is, I, I don't work for Meridia. Meridia should advise, uh, when you sign the lease, that, you know, there, this is the amount of parking allocated to you. I've lived in many apartment complexes, I, I find it a little hard pressed that it was naturally assumed by number of adults means the number of cars, that's typically outlined in the parking and, and lease agreements, and where to park if there's assigned or designated, because they need to know if their parking, uh, lots are at capacity. With that being said, we understand there's a little bit of a, of a parking concern related to Meridia, as well as One Thompson. Um, we are actively, again, uh, uh, rolling out the parking ordinance for the entire downtown area, for residents in the downtown area. Where if there is a need in these apartment complexes to find additional parking, we, we can provide that permit. Additionally, again, if you do have a valid C O C, if the vehicle is registered there, we certainly have no problem giving out additional parking permits. But the last thing we wanna do is, is, um, issue more permits, um, than, than we have uh, demand for, or give permits out to anyone, um, who doesn't, is not a lawful occupied resident. The Meridia should have advised you, and I will talk to them, uh, tomorrow, when they do sign their leases with tenants coming in, to ensure they understand, you know, the parking rules and regulations. I did work with Sergio and the, um, uh, code enforcement as well as Meridia to, um, reinstate that lower parking deck, that should be going back to Meridia after hours. I know that was a concern for many years, and that displaced a lot of the local residents onto the downtown streets and into that parking lot, but um, twenty twenty-six, that parking lot, from my understanding, will be rolled out for, for permit parking. I know that was an agenda we had with the parking ordinance, but downtown parking, uh, we're actively addressing that. As well as overcrowding issues.
Yeah, I know Sergio has brought up Meridia parking several times to his office, so thank you. Yes? That being said, I'd like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays for everyone and your families. Pay the motion for a German. Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone.